I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome. Welcome, council. Welcome guests. It looks like we have a full house. It's always nice to have a full house so that we, you know, we're actually going to show somebody what we do here. A lot of times, we only have one or two people. But tonight, council, I have the opening and I would like to talk about partnerships. In politics, partnerships are very important because partnerships allow us to do much more with the tax dollars that we receive. Many of our city infrastructure projects are done through partnerships from other levels of government. Projects like our water treatment and supply plant, that was a $5 million federal partnership with 600K we got from the province. For a total, and we did the rest for a total cost of $11 million. That was the single largest grant that we've ever received from the federal government up until that point. We were very excited because this meant we could go forward in supplying water and not having to reduce our development. The Elmdale Street reconstruction, that took a period, it took a long time to finish. We did it in stages. We did it from block to block to block, but we are finishing the last piece this year. And that's complete reconstruction. We've got the, our namesake, the creek has been woken up and it's back there now. And it's really exciting to see and it's also a great place where I see people gathering and walking at all times. And that was done with also government money and ours. There were four major intersections on the PTH-12 totaling $7 million. And that was a 50/50 partnership that we did with the province. The development of Acres Drive and commercial lots to encourage economic development in our industrial park, we received approximately $1 million from the federal government and that was to build the lots and we could sell them at cost and that, there's no lots left at this point. They're all been sold. So that was a success. The city of Steinbach has also entered partnerships with local organizations. We don't have to go very far to look. The Bethesda Foundation and what we've pledged as a city is a total of $2 million over seven years to healthcare projects in our community. One of those projects is the PCH that was announced this year for 143 new beds. The project's going to be a little over $30 million and it was made possible through a partnership of private donors, the city of Steinbach, Bethesda Foundation, and the provincial government. The development of the new credit union, the head office and the curling club, all downtown. Because of the partnership between the city and the credit union, it was also made possible because of long-term vision by past councils to purchase properties in the downtown area as they became available. If it was not for the past city council's vision, this would not, this possibly could not have happened. It would have made it very difficult for the development of the credit union and to remain downtown and the curling club to relocate very close to the arena where they wanted to stay. Council, in closing, I just want to let you know that we need partnerships. They are imperative to our future growth, whether you're looking at economic development or recreation and cultural renewal. We will need to have partnerships to maximize the projects that we can do. Thank you. Okay, council, on number three, we have the agenda in front of us. I need a motion to adopt. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments? Nothing in closing? Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Number four, we have the minutes of September 17th, 2019, the regular council meeting. They start on page one. Council, we've all had an opportunity to review them. I need a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Swigstra. Any comments? Anything further? Nothing in closing? Call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. It's just past 7:35, so we will go to 6A, public hearing. At this point, I will close the public meeting and open the public hearing. We're looking at Bylaw Act 2126, rezoning, re-Lexington Village. Mr. Workington, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This application being Bylaw 2126, application to rezone the subject property along McKenzie Avenue, development commonly known as Lexington Village. The owner of the properties is Goldmark Developments, Inc., with the application being submitted by Low &amp; Henderson, Bannman &amp; Lago, LLP. Purpose of Bylaw 2126 is to rezone the subject parcel of land from PR, Parks and Recreation, and RLD, residential low density, to RLD residential low density, as is shown on the map. The applicant is rezoning the land to align with the overall concept plan and the land currently zoned for parks and recreation was placed in another location within the development. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no correspondence on file. Comments from Community and Regional Planning Branch confirms that the rezoning confirms with the intent and policies of the city's official community plan and is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Subject to any comments or information that may be provided at the public hearing, recommendation is that city council approve second reading and if there are not sufficient objections to prompt the referral of this file to the municipal board, third reading may also be given.
Thank you. Is the applicant here today? Do you wish to speak? Please state your name and address.
David Bannman, 355 Valerie Lane in Steinbach. I'm here on behalf of the developer. I think Mr. Workington laid out in detail, I think, the major issue here and that's part of what was zoned parks and recreation now going to residential development designation. Originally, the idea behind that Parks and Recreation area was a retention pond. That retention pond's being actually moved to what would be the northwest corner, my direction, not directionally challenged, but it's going to the northwest corner. In fact, it's already there, so there's nothing being taken away. It's just being redirected. Originally, when we looked at the concept plan, we were asked to do an overall plan and that was the main idea. But we found out from an engineering perspective that it would be a little bit easier to move that pond out of the way and put residential development in the area where the retention pond was supposed to be. So I think that's the major difference here. Otherwise, I'll now move to any questions, answering questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Bannman. Are there any questions of council? You may take your seat. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed on this? Counselor Swigstra?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for second reading.
Okay. Do we have a second, Counselor? Jake Siemens? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As has been explained, this is to rezone this section here to allow for the section that's designated as Parks and Recreation to be moved from one section to another. In this case, it's a retention pond. I think that it's reasonable to facilitate that and obviously, if we approve this rezoning, then it'll make possible the opening of the subdivision, which is coming up in the next file, which is 46 residential units. And I think it's good when our neighborhoods continue to grow. So it makes sense for us to approve this.
Anything further? Anything of council? Anything in closing? Well, council, this looks to be straightforward, so I'll go directly into asking for the question. All those in favor? Okay, that is Carrie. So let's, I need a motion for third reading then. You can go directly into third reading. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Jake Hebert. Any comments? Nothing in closing? We'll go straight to the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you. We'll go to 6B, subdivision 4451, 2019, 8186, creation of Kensington Drive, extension of Essex Drive, York Crescent, and Windsergate, re-Lexington Village. Starts on page three on your council agenda. So we will close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, this is an application for subdivision, File 451-2019-8186, with the extension of several streets and the creation of Kensington Drive. Applicant, sorry, owner of the property also Goldmark Developments, Inc., with the applicant being Low &amp; Henderson, Bannman &amp; Lago, LLP. Purpose of the subdivision application is to allow the creation of 46 residential low-density lots and the extension of the road sections as indicated. The applicant is proposing the next phase of a multi-phase residential development. Indications from Manitoba Community Planning having no concerns and also confirms that the proposed subdivision generally complies with the city's official community plan. Recommendation that city council approve the application, subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Mr. Workington? Is the applicant here today? Would you wish to speak? Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Do we have a second, Counselor? Bill Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see that our community is continuing to thrive, another 46 potential residents coming in. And the great thing about this project that I will say again when this file has come up in front of us in the past, this is giving young families a great opportunity to get into a membership. It's something that's really important to allow younger individuals to be able to get a foot up and run a foot ahead and really be able to get roots in our community. So I'm really happy with the way that this project has come along and to look to see what it'll look like once it's over and what the next thing about it will be.
Anything further?
Yes, I'd like to add that you're right on with that and we love to see development. Again, young families need that type of things. Thank you very much.
Anything further, council? Well, council, it is great to see our city grow and this looks like it's going to be well-supported, so we'll go straight to the questions. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you. Number seven, we have no delegations. We'll go to 8A. That is the Reports and Recommendations City Manager Memorandum of Understanding. There's information to follow. Mr. Workington, can I get you to introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I was able to provide all council members with an information package earlier this evening, just prior to council meeting, with information with respect to this particular agenda item. The Memorandum of Understanding that you have been provided seeks council's endorsement after due consideration and after council has had its opportunity to debate, recommended that if council is desiring to enter into it, that they do so by a resolution. And then just wanted to make another point that a follow-up to the Memorandum of Understanding would be a further item on council agenda later on this evening with respect to a resolution for a grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. I believe we have a group that would like to present, as a presentation for us, so I'll call you forward.
Grant Laszlo, 34 Creek Side Drive. Thanks, Mayor Funk and council, for, council members, for meeting with us today. I'm here today representing Southeast Event Center, Inc. And also present with our Southeast Event Center is, we do have, we have Len Newfald here. We also have Darrell Penner. We have Claude Villefort, Don Jansen, not present, is Alan Penner, Russ Fast, and Bob Smith. We also would like to introduce, we've got some interim staff with Laurel Cumming and Kevin Geisner. And so we are here today to partner. And so we look forward to moving this forward and so I'm going to ask Kevin to give a short presentation on the project.
Hello. This is a new spot. Never been in this spot before, so. Well, thank you, guys, for allowing us the opportunity to be here today. Super excited to talk about this content. Super excited to be part of this group and super excited to be part of a partnership, just like you talked about, to kick off today's meeting. So I wanted to talk further about Southeast Event Center and the conceptual design renderings that we're going to show you throughout today are provided by VR Sport, a division of Vern Reimer Architecture in collaboration with Populous, just to say that. So the purpose of me up here today is to just quickly explain to the community who Southeast Event Center is, what the project is, and ask, moving forward. So Southeast, Southeast Event Center is also termed as SEC, so you're going to hear it both ways today, Southeast Event Center or SEC, same thing, is a non-for-profit membership group comprised of local business owners and community members who have donated time and funding to realize a common dream. Their thoughts really are bigger than just a building. It involves creating a place where the community can come together for social, cultural, educational, and physical activities. So the building needed, needs to be multi-use, inclusive, accessible, and affordable key elements. And basically, how do we create those regular community experiences that we experience, like summer in the city or Rogers Hometown Hockey every day, rain or shine, hot or cold, is the concept? So SEC wants this project to move forward with community collaboration and we are proud and I think we can all agree that currently here in Steinbach, we have some awesome facilities. Our pool's well-used. We've got some great splash parks that are well-used. Curling Rink, AD Penner Park, soccer parks well-used, new running track, and our gyms are awesome in our Hanover School Division. But the one thing we don't have is that large place to congregate on a regular basis and a large scale for a variety of events, rain or shine, hot or cold, whether that be for conferences, banquets, concerts, provincial national events, multiple meeting room spaces. The biggest community recreational indoor facility that we currently have is the TG Smith Center. It can only be used for one event and eight months out of the year. How can we continue to keep that growing energy of our community within our community and continue to grow that within our community moving forward? So we found the best solution in the best location. So we're going to talk about what that looks like moving forward. The project, an event center, two-level event center, 82,500 square feet, seating for 2,500 people, up to 3,200 for larger floor events, inclusive facility that can host multiple, multiple events. And at the end of the day, any live performance, we want it to be available and open for any possibility with inside this facility. To show you some images, from graduations on the top right to concerts, to trade shows, to animal equestrian events, to Disney on Ice, to any sort of live event, showing as an example, Fast and Furious Live. We also want it to be open and available for sporting events of all courts and the flexibility to do court ice, change the dynamic of the bowl so you could do more intimate settings, for example, a cheer event, or use the entire floor for gymnastic events or whatever that event looks like. Flexibility to have space for banquets, to trade shows, there's boats on the top right, to memorial event. If there's a tragic incident in our community, currently, we don't have that large-scale place to meet together, to remember, and this could provide that. The bottom row showing the flexibility with moving the stage with curtaining to create the atmosphere that you want with inside the facility, depending on the event that we're hosting, for customizable floor, all these elements with the end being retractable to allow for stage are in the budget for this current facility. Looking at the facility from a grand scale, it would be currently attached downtown to our TG Smith Community Arena with an atrium element and a multi-use space used for banquets and hard court for multi-use court sports. So this view from Reimer-Elmdale intersection, looking at the facility. So the removal of the current Centennial Arena with the addition of this. Here's a look from the ground level at the front atrium entrance of the center and then a view from Elmdale Street looking at the center. And now here's just a quick walkthrough to give you guys perspective. Stairs would lead up to the concourse level for ticketing for events. If there's floor events, you can go through the bottom doors as well. So moving forward, we'll quickly have her just give you some scope on the facility. So we have the main event center and then we have the multipurpose space which could be used for banquets. Tables are positioned there, up to 500 people around round tables. Give you perspective, Freedensvelt is 280, approximately, Niverville is 350, just to give you scope on what that facility could do as a banquet facility and then showing the event center element. Trade shows could be developed inside this facility, spanning into the TG Smith Community Arena and into the Curling Rink, so making it a true diverse facility using the current concept that's already there. And also showing that that bottom facility, if it's not a trade show, could be a court. Could be basketball, two volleyball courts, or eight pickleball courts. Showing you inside, just briefly, what it looks like if it was a banquet, could be basketball court, could be two volleyball courts. We then show on the top right, pickleball courts, could be yoga. Really, the options are available, could be footsall in there too, for those who like to play soccer. Showing the second level, the concourse level, there is, just wanted to emphasize that track on top of the multi-use space. Yes, the concourse inside the arena can be used as a walking, but if there's events in there, this track on top of the multi-use facility is just a better quality track. It's wider and it'll probably be open more often than not, more, just giving more flexibility to allow people to be active at any time during the year. This just shows an image of that space. If it was a court track element going on at the same time, that space below could be a banquet, could be whatever that, whatever is termed by the events and by this facility moving forward. To give you some more visuals, this is the bowl inside of the event center, set up as a concert, the end pushed back for this particular setup. And visualizing that with people inside, top right shows suites, bottom right shows concourse. These are all elements that have been budgeted along with a number that we'll present to you at the end for this entire project. This is showing different layouts from full to half, could be quarter, allowing flexibility with events, so you could start at a quarter, you sell out, you move to half, or depending on what you're trying to do, allows different options. Just showing you what that would look like with the scale of this facility with people in it. On the right, full, bottom left, half, top left would be a trade show picture. Talking a little bit about the atrium, in front of it's a plaza space, which we'll talk to as well, could be used for parking on certain event days, but could also just left open for pre-game activities and events. We saw this through the walkthrough, just showing what it will look like right now on the scale of what we've been talking about. And then showing you inside, on bottom left, if that's a networking event inside that space, potential stages could be put there, arts could be on display during different events, if that's musical or busking. Top left is the forks, allowing vendors in there. This could be done during the winter months, just to keep that vibrant and all activeness in all aspects of the facility. Bottom right shows the bigger image, shows just people getting a chance to actually wait for an event where it's warm, where it's generally cold at most times of the year. Showcasing that plaza space, which is just in this area, just giving some concepts on what that could be. It could be like Wrigley Field, pre-game element, tailgating, could be set up a big Christmas tree, just allowing the options for the community to gather to do elements like Rogers Hometown Hockey, which we were able to do when they were here last year. On the grand scheme, looking over at the big picture of what this whole entire facility would look like from a sky view, we do feel this is the best location and the best solution for a community because it is multi-use inclusive, it's accessible, and it's affordable. This project aligns with the city of Steinbach's official community plan and maintains downtown as a dynamic public space. It also takes advantage of construction benefits from existing infrastructure that's already there and services. The facility design also provides ample parking and we'll do to that on this next slide. So currently, our current facility has 40 parking spaces for the Centennial Arena and we have 74 at the Curling Rink. This, so basically, this here is what we're used to right now for the Centennial Arena. So we're able to make that 233 spaces on this side, 133 additional here, 137 additional here. So this is timesing parking from what we're used to by six onsite. So if, just to give an example, at the highest peak, 1,300 people would be an event inside the event center. If we were to times that by two, two and a half, maybe three, to 3,700 people maxed out inside that facility. So if we times our tenants by two and a half to three, we're still able to times our parking by six from what we're used to today in front of the facility, on the entire space, over 600 spaces. And that's not including potential development here with city-owned land, with 76 more spaces, and also not including the 300 at the SCU with certain partnerships ranging to make that space work for something like this. And also the town square space, which is 150 spots, and all the street parking around. So we would estimate that there's about 1,200 parking spaces around, over 1,200 parking spaces around this facility, including the ones onsite, just to showcase that parking is something that we shouldn't be concerned about and we are able to increase it by 500% on the physical site itself based on this rendering. So, and also, the city infrastructure's in place with multiple access points, so getting out of events will be a lot easier, similar to the MTS Center downtown, just able to get out quick. So moving forward, Southeast Event Center's goal is to make this facility multi-use inclusive, accessible, and affordable. And so the layout, how we've laid it out, the partnership is city of Steinbach, $10 million, provincial, federal government, 17 and a half, and private donors, 15 and a half, full project, $42.5 million to accomplish the project.
Sorry about that, we're slightly over 10 minutes, but anyways, would like to thank you for your time. We ask you to partner with us and move forward with, under the terms of the Memorandum of Understanding and we look forward to working with the city.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was a great presentation. Really enjoyed it a lot. I just want to ask council if there are any questions for our presenters today. Counsel, before we go into the Memorandum of Understanding, I have got some notes that I, just some summarized notes that I want to just hit one more time, if you have a couple minutes, before we go into discussion, asking for a direction from you guys. I do have a, our point will just wait, there we go. So renewing recreation and cultural facilities is one of council's So renewing recreation and cultural facilities is one of council's main priorities for the city. Locating an event center downtown keeps with the city council's 2012 unanimous decision to put this type of facility in the city's core in Central Business District. The city's objective for the Central Business District are to ensure that Steinbach retains its role as a regional center for commercial, cultural and social activities, to provide focus for the commercial, civic and community activities of the city and to encourage a mix of use in appropriate locations at appropriate densities throughout the Central Business District. Downtown event center ensures Steinbach's downtown remains vibrant, remains a vibrant hub with complementing existing indoor and outdoor activities, amenities. Significant construction benefits from the existing services and infrastructure surrounded by the established businesses. Facility design will provide for ample parking. This is a multi-use venue that supports recreation, arts, economy and culture under one roof in a way that provides excellent value to our citizens. It will be a community place for all community groups made through community partnerships. The memorandum of understanding, key points are the city will provide $10 million in city funds. The city submitting, submitting a grant application to provincial and federal levels of government for $17.5 million. The SEC Inc. provides at least $15 million in private donations with the total project cost stemming to $42.5 million. The city provides city land for development in and around the TG Smith Center. The SEC group will operate the event center and the city retains ownership as a long-term community asset. Some other important points are this project requires funding from, from other levels of government to proceed and there will be, there will be opportunity for public input. The city is looking forward to moving on this project with the SEC as the key contributor. Okay, counsel, those are, those are my thoughts, but I would like to see which direction you'd like to, Council Spikes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion that we adopt the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, a second, Council Bill Hever, go ahead, Council Spikes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is not a normal council meeting. This is, this is one that is, I think, a pivotal moment in our history as a city. I am frankly thrilled to be able to support this memorandum of understanding. I think it's a great partnership, it's a unique opportunity that we have and in terms of to, to build this event center and to do it in partnership with the Southeast Event Center. So as has been noted, the memorandum of understanding outlines the, the basic terms of the agreement that the city, that the city is proposing to make with the Southeast Event Center. And I just want to make a couple of comments just around the memorandum, just to make sure that, that we are clear about how we're proceeding and also about how the city is ensuring that this is being done in a fiscally responsible way. Certainly one thing that, that, that I can say is that we are, we have confidence in the people that are involved in the Southeast Event Center. These are community members, these are people who've been involved in helping to build our community and they are committing significant time and resources in order to help the city make this possible. I cannot think of any better group for us to partner with in such an important project. This is going to be an events center. As has been noted in the presentation, this is multi-use. The, the main portion of it will have 2,500 spectator seats, it could be used for concerts, events, ice sports, trade shows, ceremonies. In addition, there will be a 500-seat multi-use hall, gymnasium and atrium. So this is a facility that will be used throughout the year, every single month and we expect it to be a hub of activity in the downtown area that will benefit our entire city. Why downtown? I think the reasons have been outlined very well, but just to, just to restate that the city, we own most of the land in that section. You know, if you go back in history some 20 to 25 years, that was when council first started purchasing land in that area. And there was always the idea that this land would obviously be used for something, that there would be future projects, but we have to give full credit to the past councils for the foresight in purchasing those properties over the years and ensuring that we have those properties put together to make such a thing possible. But of course, this is land that, that we currently own and so of course that helps with, it helps with costs because the land is already there, it's already serviced, we already have other facilities there and it's possible to synchronize that with it. And so the downtown makes sense as a, as a location and obviously putting it right beside the TG Smith Center and that way you have the, the, the main portion right attached to that and so that way you have two sections that could be used for ice surfaces, it's a, it's great to be able to do that. We are, we're going into partnership in regards to a city contribution of $10 million. That is a capital contribution and the memorandum of understanding notes that that amount may be used for capital construction, site development or servicing or additional land purchases that might be required. And so it is a significant contribution, there's no doubt about it. This is a lot of money for the City of Steinbach, but this is also a historic project for the City of Steinbach. And I think it's important to note that we are getting a lot for a city contribution of $10 million. For a city contribution of $10 million, we are getting a $42.5 million facility. And key thing to note here is that the SEC group has agreed to commit at least $15 million of private funding towards this facility. $15 million contribution helps to make this facility possible. And again, that is a simply remarkable commitment. Obviously, we are seeking additional support from federal and provincial governments and that's why we're submitting a grant application, so that way we can secure the other $17.5 million. Working together with the SEC group, working together in partnership, we are certainly hopeful that we will be able to access that funding. But I think there's a strong case to be made to the other levels of government when they see that we have strong supportive council, that we have a committed group of private investors all working together in partnership to build a facility that, that, that helps to really, I won't even just say revitalize because I think we have a vital, a vitalized downtown, would make it even more active than it, than it is now. The, some of the comments that, that Kevin made in regards to parking, I, I think it's important to, to address that, that yes, questions come up in regards to parking, I think the presentation was excellent in terms of pointing out that, that in just the initial plans here, over 600 spaces, you know, making it by six times, five to six times more parking on the, on the land itself with more land around that could be used for parking. There is land the city owns that potentially could be used for parking, there's, there's the land that we currently, that the credit union already shares, allows the city to use at certain times for parking. There are actually quite a few parking spots that will be there, would be a substantially better parking situation than what we have now because of the substantial increase in the number of stalls that are there. And important to remember that multiple access points, there are many different ways to, to enter and to exit and so you don't have a long lineup of traffic. On the one road of access, if it's on some remote location, you've got multiple points in which you can get there and so that's certainly, that's certainly positive as well. The, it's also the memorandum of understanding notes that the city intends to enter into an agreement with the, with the SEC group for the purposes of operating the facility. The city retains ownership, but the city is pleased to be able to cooperate with the SEC group so that we can have their expertise involved in operating this facility because we want to secure, we want to make sure that we have it used as much as possible, we want it run in the most efficient way and the fact that they are willing to provide their expertise in ensuring this is run in the best way possible is another reason why we can be confident that this project will succeed. Also, the memorandum of understanding commits the city to contribute the equivalent to a maximum amount of 0.5 mils towards the operating cost, the core operating cost of the proposed facility. One mil is about a million dollars, so 0.5 mils is about $500,000. That's a significant contribution that is over and above the $10 million capital cost. Why do we put that in there? Why do we specify this? It's to show that we're serious, that we're serious about making this work. We realize that there are costs involved, not just in the capital construction, but also in the ongoing running of the facility. And so throughout this process, we've sought to clearly identify what is the city's contribution, what can we reasonably afford, what can we reasonably do? And then also specifying what could we reasonably do in regards to operating costs and what's the, what's the mil rate levy that we can be comfortable with there. Well, when you would look at this facility that we're going to be getting and you look at what the city needs to put in, this is a fantastic deal for the city. I'm very pleased that, that we have the opportunity to move in this direction, so I would certainly encourage everyone here to, to vote in favor.
Thank you, thank you, Council Spikes, for anything further, Council Hever.
I'm very pleased to second this resolution. Council Spikes had pretty well put everything in place. One of the main reasons I ran for council was to see a new rec center. This makes me very, very happy. We've been working together with SEC, thank you very much. You've done, you've done more than anybody else, I really appreciate that. That's about all.
Anything further, counsel? Counsel Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today is a very exciting day for Steinbach. Steinbach City Council along with SEC are partnering to improve our recreational facilities to the stand, to the standard that our wonderful city deserves and expects. I want to highlight a few points of interest on this project. With regards to the funding and partnership, with this arrangement, Steinbach is able to provide a state-of-the-art facility with minimal investment. Our current Centennial Arena is on its very last legs and it is due for replacement. With our partnership, with private investment and hopefully other levels of government, we are able to stretch a $10 million investment, which on its own would not be able to provide much of a modern replacement for our aging Centennial Arena. Provide a state-of-the-art spectator facility and event center that can host much more than just large attended hockey games. With this partnership, Steinbach residents will only see a $10 million investment from their tax dollars or provided to a $40 million facility, essentially equating a quarter on the dollar. This is a huge win for everyone. The downtown location is optimal for a facility of this type. Vibrant cities continue to invest in the downtown core, just as we hope and expect our businesses to do as well. We as the city are leading by example of encouraging economic development in our population center by potentially driving thousands of people into our downtown core week over week. We really have the very costly infrastructure in place to be able to accommodate this facility with just a few minor upgrades, saving millions of dollars in comparison to a new green site. Furthermore, thanks in part to the vision of past councils, this land is mostly purchased to be able to not only build this event center, but provide additional parking spaces to be able to accommodate the traffic. Make no mistake, this event center is so much more than just a hockey arena. Because of this partnership between private investment, businesses and other locals of government, Southeast Manitoba will be getting a facility that can be used year-round. A 2,500-seat venue will be able to accommodate not only our fantastic Pistons, but be able to host trade shows, ceremonies, various events and conferences and be able to set up to host large concerts as well. Second phase of this event center will see a 500-seat hall and atrium built, that again, with flexibility in mind, will be able to be used for large banquets, gatherings and various court activities. In our earliest planning sessions as a council, we pinpointed four main strategic priorities that we wanted to always keep at the forefront of our decision-making. City advocacy, economic development, openness and transparency, recreation and cultural facility renewals. This major announcement today, all the work we have put in to take this dream one step further into reality, check off all the boxes of our priorities that we've set up. I am proud of everything we have done together and I'm excited to see that not even one year into our term, we are bringing forward such a major announcement for a wonderful community.
Thank you, Counsel Penner, Counsel Hever.
A viable path to a multiplex. When campaigning for city council last year, oftentimes I was asked if I would support an entertainment facility such as performing arts center or a multiplex, sportsplex. I maintained at the time and continue to emphasize that I would consider a viable business plan if and when proposed. Several months ago, city council was approached by members of SEC with just such a plan. Members of SEC have been working on plans since 2001, wanting to see a multiplex actually come to fruition in Steinbach. So you ask, what impresses you about this plan? Suggesting it is viable. The members of SEC are business people from Steinbach and surrounding area. These individuals are highly successful in their own right, who want nothing more than to see a successful venture such as this multiplex proposal to not only be built and well-maintained, but also to be an attraction that will draw thousands of people to our community and to this facility. It will be both a participatory and an entertainment center. I see this plan, including the funding proposal, as practical, well-thought-out and therefore viable. This facility as proposed will not only be well-used by those attending, but also attract additional people and businesses to our community. The positive impact this complex will have on City of Steinbach cannot be underestimated. I am excited, my face may not be telling you that, but I am excited to see the city partnering with SEC and the community at large, excited and looking forward to the completion of such a much-needed event center in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a lot has been said and I too want to add my voice to the appreciation for SEC as they have been all for the last number of years as we move forward in this, but this is a community project that has taken many different iterations over the last many years and it's, it's now we're, we're seeing the fruits of that labor and there was a lot of struggles in that. But our community has always struggled with major facilities with their, if they're not water treatment or sewage treatment or a street, those are easy compared to the recreation and cultural building. At one point it has to, I'm old enough now, look at the Steinbach Aquatic Center. That discussion started in the mid-'70s as to requiring indoor pool and the old kingdom pools shut down downtown. The council struggled for many years until they built an outdoor pool and then it was till 2000 where, year 2000 was announced and they built an indoor pool. That took many different forms. One of the things that, and same with this facility, now we are finally going to get a facility to replace an existing arena built in 1967. But the one thing that is interesting to me is when I look at the members of SEC, one of the names on there is a guy by the name of Bob Smith. Bob Smith was the driving force in building the second arena in 1995 in Steinbach and that took a lot of work and a lot of different design issues as they work with council of the day. But even so, it was his father TG Smith, who the arena is named after, that was the driver of the first arena in Steinbach. So there is some continuation in involvement in SEC as Bob's still an active member on that group. So we do need to realize that there is a long history of many of these community projects in Steinbach and that continues to this day and has a long history. But I too am extremely pleased with what has taken place and the opportunity that is before us for all the reasons I have mentioned here. I look forward to the day that we can show them.
Thank you. Counsel Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting the motion because this is finally a recreation project that makes sense for our community. To have a private group come to the table with $15 million is exactly the kind of community support we need to move ahead with a project of this scope. The private donations alone will cover 35% of project costs. Without this private commitment, this project would not even be an option. At the same time, my decision to support this project does not come lightly. When I look at this project, I see not only a multi-use recreation facility, but I see an investment in our downtown that will keep it thriving for decades to come. Consider this, once this project has been completed, it means that within a 10-year span, $50 million will have been invested in recreation in downtown Steinbach. That is a staggering number in a relatively short timeframe and it makes Elmdale Drive the entertainment corridor of Steinbach. When you factor in projects like the SCU and other downtown development, the investment in downtown Steinbach jumps to approximately $100 million within the past 10 years. It would be very difficult to find a city of our size that comes even close to that number. I was initially surprised that there was consensus to build this facility downtown, fully expecting that it would go on a greenfield location. But the fact is, the cost of purchasing land and bringing in city services to a greenfield location would be huge, possibly prohibitive, not only for this facility, but also for commercial developments such as restaurants and stores that would want to build nearby. In fact, even if the costs for the greenfield location versus the downtown location were the same, I would still choose downtown. By building this entertainment center downtown, we are keeping By building this entertainment center downtown, we are keeping our downtown vibrant, making it more affordable for economic offshoots of this project. Downtown location is much more conducive to pre-event festivities and hype, which is a big part of community building that comes with big events. Having attended numerous sporting events and concerts in different parts of Canada and the U.S., the best experiences are where venues are downtown versus a greenfield location. As mentioned, when it comes to parking and traffic flow, there will be over six hundred spaces in addition to the SCU lot, so there will be plenty of parking. There will also be many accesses off the various lots pushing traffic to many streets surrounding the entertainment center. This is also superior to a greenfield location that could very well only have one or two accesses onto one or two roads. In terms of the city's contribution of ten million dollars, it is likely something we can do without extending borrowing terms over a five-year max. This is significant, and as it will allow us to invest in further recreation and culture projects in the relatively near future, without being tied down by payments to this project for the long term. So thank you to the SEC group. Your work, dedication, and investment is the reason this project can move forward. I don't take for granted how fortunate Steinbeck is to have a group of community-minded leaders such as yourselves. Now we look to our provincial and federal governments to come through with the grant funding we need to make this project a reality.
Thank you, council. Anything in closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the will of council is going to be very clear. I'm very pleased to see the support, and I look forward to seeing this project move ahead.
Thank you very much. All of you haven't caught it by now, you can know this group likes to talk a lot. So I'm going to keep my comments short, but I do want to, I don't have to spend time convincing council, so I'm going to talk to the audience. I want you to know that tonight's resolution is to commit ten million dollars plus five hundred thousand dollars a year, or tying it to a mill rate, it'll grow too, but initially five hundred thousand dollars a year shows and confirms our support for this project. We believe in this project, all of us do, and we're here for you to work with. And we're so thankful that you took it upon yourself to come see us and get this going, and did such a great job in presenting to us. And I'm so glad we've been able to close this circle, and now we can start working on this, and we can go hard on it. And it's just, it's a really exciting time. Council, we are creating history right now. This is going to be a historic building in our community. And we've talked about this for two terms that I've been on council, and we've gotten so far in such a short time. I'm just, it's incredible, and I thank council, but I really thank the SEC group. Thank you so much, and your efforts have not been wasted on this. We are partners with you, and we are going forward now. So with that, council, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We are going to have a fifteen-minute recess now, because everything after this is more just city business. We don't want to keep you here for that, and I'm sure the media is eager to take statements from you guys. Thank you very much, and hopefully can all do some handshakes and pictures yet, too. Okay, I'll call the reconvene the meeting to order. Council, we're back at number eight. That's eight B, that's the land purchase. Forty-two Carlton Drive starts on page sixty-four on our package, in our package. Mr. Workin Dean, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is a offer-to-purchase document that's in the agenda package. It is a tentative agreement that has been signed, subject to council approval, for the purchase of the vacant lot at forty-two Carlton Drive in Steinbeck from Doug and Kalia Penner for one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, with a possession date of January first, 2020. The recommendation for that purchase is for council to approve, to allow for an option to be provided for a potential pathway linkage with the public right of way.
Okay, council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Siemens?
I wish to approve.
Do I have a second here? Councilor Penner? Go ahead, Councilor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated by administration, this is property that we wish to purchase on Carlton Drive, and this would give the city an option to put a pedestrian pathway, connect Clearspring Greens to the rest of the city's existing pathways, and it would, this is something that has been asked for by that community, but this would also, this would give us a clear option as to a possibility of putting a walking path.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is number two of the contentious collection issues that we are hopefully working towards solving tonight. This is something that a lot of the people in Clearspring Greens were asking, and the passion delegation reinforced that. This gives us an opportunity to now connect that through an eighty Penner Park pathway option, and looking forward to checking another one off of our to-do list.
Anything further, council? Anything in closing? Well, council, I agree with Councilor Penner. It's great to get all the contentious issues done in the first year we're elected.
There'll be more.
So maybe we can take holidays after this. Anyways, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, we've got number nine. Number nine, A, accounts payable on the back of the book. We've all had a chance to go over it. Looking for a motion. Councilor Hebert, second by Councilor Hebert. Comments? Call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Nine B, that Steinbeck Christian School.
Mr. Mayor, I will excuse myself in case of conflict of interest.
Thank you. Thank you. That is four, four, five, one, twenty nineteen, eighty-one, eighty subdivision. It's on page seventy on our, Mr. Workin Dean, could you please introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this application for subdivision, file four, five, one, dash, two, zero, one, nine, dash, eight, one, eight, zero, at fifty PTH twelve north, is being applied for by Steinbeck Christian High Schools, and the purpose is to subdivide the existing school property at that location into four separate parcels. And the purpose of the plan is to identify specific areas as separate parcels so the owner may designate the parcel ownership under two distinct corporate entities. That will require that the owner enter into several agreements so that future access and servicing to the parcels may be maintained. Manitoba community and regional planning indicates that the proposed subdivision does meet the intent of the city's official community plan. Recommendation from administration is the subdivision be approved, subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Okay, thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed?
I would like to proceed to approve.
Motion to approve, seconder. Okay, Councilor Hebert. Go ahead, Councilor Bill Hebert.
I see no reason why we shouldn't be able to approve this. That's about the end of it. Thank you.
Councilor Hebert?
Obviously, bringing this proposal to city council, its people, the applicants, have thought about it at length, and it's obviously meeting their needs, and as the city administration has said, they recommend it, it's obviously an asset to that area, and Steinbeck, the Bible school and the school there are great entities in the city, and I just, when I read this, I have no reason why we wouldn't propose it in that area. It's surrounded by industrial and stuff, and I think it's a good value for that property.
Anything further? Anything in closing? Okay, council, call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, thank you. All our councillors back. Yep. Okay, so council, we're on nine C, that is the resolution, investing in Canada infrastructure program, re the aquatic center, starts on page ninety-five. Mr. Workin Dean, could you please introduce this?
There is a prepared resolution on page ninety-five of your agenda package. This is one of two grant applications that administration has completed. As part of the application process, this also requires a resolution of city council to approve. The first one is an application for the Steinbeck Aquatic Center improvements for the facility in general, total project costing two point seven three five million dollars, and request and recommend city council approve that grant application on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Workin Dean. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Siemens?
Motion to approve that we apply for a grant.
Do we have a second here? Councilor Susan Penner? Go ahead, Councilor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to apply for a grant, as stated by administration. We are looking at a renovation project at our Steinbeck Aquatic Center, which is nearing its twentieth birthday in the next while, and the total cost renovation is two million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The project will be done over a number of different years, will probably be done at the same time, but that is the estimated cost of the project, and we are seeking a grant fund for seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents for this project, to complete the project, to do the community culture recreation. It would help us towards that project.
Anything, Councilor Siemens? Councilor Penner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This work needs to get done at the Steinbeck Aquatic Center, so it would certainly be nice to get some help to accomplish that. It's a significant cost, obviously, the total. If we could get support from other programs like this, that would certainly be beneficial.
Anything further? Anything in closing? Yes, council, the government sets up these, investing in Canada infrastructure programs so that we will apply for them. They set money aside so that we can improve our infrastructure, and a pool is some of our soft infrastructure, it's entertainment, but it's very important, it's key to our community and to our region, is a pool that is heavily used by our region, and I think it's wise that we use all forms of funding that are available to us to maintain and fix it. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Nine D, resolution, investing in Canada infrastructure program, page ninety-eight. Mr. Workin Dean, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this grant application, again, is under the ICIP program as well. This does pertain to the memorandum of understanding that council dealt with earlier this evening, and is for the application for the construction of an event center in Steinbeck, a total project cost of forty-two point five million, with requested funding of seventeen point five million. Recommendation is to approve.
Mr. Workin Dean? Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swigster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion that we proceed.
Okay, do we have a second here? Councilor Hebert? Go ahead, Councilor Swigster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an important component that goes along with our memorandum of understanding, and that is putting in the official request to the other levels of government to provide support. As has been noted, the total cost of the project is estimated at about forty-two point five million dollars. City's contribution, ten million, fifteen million dollar private, which means that we need seventeen and a half from the federal and provincial governments in order for this to go ahead. As a city, we have done our due diligence in regards to moving this project forward, in terms of coming to this arrangement with the Southeast Event Center. The people involved in the Southeast Event Center have done their part in terms of developing this project and committing the funding, and so now we are hopeful that the other levels of government will partner with us to make this a full partnership between us, the province, the federal government, and the Southeast Event Center so that we can move forward with this project.
Councilor Hebert?
Thank you. Councilor Swigster has pretty well said what needs to be said. I'm excited about this as well, and I think it's a great deal for our community. I think it's good that we go to federal government for this support.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything in closing? Okay, I will call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Number ten, council question period. Is there any questions of council? Seeing none, we'll go to correspondence, number eleven, correspondence and petitions. Number eight, or letter eight, Rachel and Lee Schmidtke, Stars Air Ambulance fundraiser. It's on page one oh three. Council evolved this. How would you like to advise on this? Yes, Councilor Penner?
Mr. Mayor, I feel that we should offer optional attendance to this from council.
And how is council consensus on that?
Sounds good.
Okay, good. Then I would say, just if this is something you want to go to, then just email Deb Rempel, city clerk, and tell her to, tell her you want to attend, and she will probably pick up tickets for this. Okay, there's no other business. That means for a German, need a motion to adjourn. Councilor Jake Hebert, second by Councilor Siemens. Any comments? In favor? That is Carrie. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, seven thirty P.M.